Welcome to tonight's meeting of December 21st, 2021. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the principle of liberty and justice.
Roll call, please. Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nirmela.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
And Counselor Snack.
Present.
There are no minutes. Presentations. Mayor Protem Demat?
Emily Littlejohn, IT Director.
Larry Garlic, IT Services Manager.
Ray, Software Engineering Manager.
Andy Kabelhinen, Lead Software Engineer.
Bill Shire, IT Systems Manager. Thank you very much. So, the reason we have these folks up here tonight is for the 2021 Digital Cities Survey Award. This is put on in partnership by CDG and the National League of Cities. So, for 2021, Westminster is only is one of only three Colorado cities in the 75,000 to 124,000 population category winners posted on the Center for Digital Government website. So, this is a pretty good award, and I believe it's not the first time that you've got it. So, we are very proud of all the work that you guys did. Sure that you've actually seen it, but for the cameras and the folk. We're going to give them a round of applause. So, I'm particularly proud of you guys because I'm an IT team. And we have a relatively large group that runs our IT teams across the city. It's such a big organization. So, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about your team. They kind of spoke about it.
Thank you so much. We do have about 35 people, so this is just a small representation. And Larry Garlic, who is our IT Service Secretary, has prepared a couple of words.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank not just our IT department for this award, but this is also showing what our city has done in the areas of technology and the city leadership and the commitment to technology. And then in the support that council has also given to us, and we thank you for that.
Like I said, we couldn't be prouder. So, thank you very much and congratulate.
I'll turn it over to City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Councilors. In a few moments, Chief Harbert will provide an overview of the extensive work underway to better support our police department and ensure that our employees are getting support they need in their work to serve and protect our community. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank Chief Harbert and his command staff for their leadership over these past six months, which has been exemplary. The Westminster Police Department is making significant strides towards strengthening its internal work environment and ensuring our officers are able to continue to provide high-quality service for our residents and our community members. Our officers set the standard for professionalism and dedication over and over again, day and night, and I thank them for serving our community. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Harbert to present the Police Department Plan of Action.
Mayor, Mayor Protem. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council, thanks for having me here tonight. Norm Harbert, Internet Chief of Police. It's not to reread the document you were given. I just want to give a high-level overview of this. With that, I do think it's important to highlight what we were discussing here tonight. Did not impact police services, did not affect public safety. The men and women of the department, both sworn and professional staff, continue to come in every day and every night to work hard through the challenges, both internal and external, and provide great service to our residents. The discussions are not about public safety. These are about an internal work environment. So, beginning in July, City Managers Office and myself met with all the staff, both professional and sworn, upwards of about 23 meetings over the course of several months. And really not to diminish any of the content in the meetings, it really boiled down to two themes overall. Westminster Police Staff, both sworn and professional, need to be valued, respected, and have a seat at the table. The second, the second point is leaders, we need to do a better job of communication and making sure that all of the employees feel supported. So, with that, our plan to address these things are to provide, one, to provide additional resources and strengthen the workplace environment. Two, we need to remain competitive with compensation and benefits for all, all members of that department. We need to recruit and retain needed sworn and professional staff in urgency. We also need to, we also need to take a look to see where we can better balance between professional staff and sworn staff. We also need to enhance communication, create opportunities with staff to better engage the leadership in the department and city leadership. Last and certainly not least, we need to, as directed by council, need to bring a draft of collective bargaining ordinance forward for the City Council's consideration and to continue work with the local FOB. As this plan is implemented, we will obviously continue to have meetings with staff and listen to staff. With that, obviously, other things are going to come up, and we'll address those issues as they arise. So, with that, council, I'm here tonight to answer any questions, any field, any comments.
Any comments or questions? Mayor Protem Demat?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for being here and Mr. Andrews for this opportunity. I don't have any questions, more so comments. I would like to say, first of all, I'm proud of the men and women who served the city on both for our Police Department and our Fire Department. We have a lot of great people who work to protect this city, and so that goes first and foremost. Second, I would like to thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know that council, current and the prior folks that just left, certainly impressed upon you the priority of making sure that these issues were addressed, as well as retaining and attracting officers and how important that is to both residents and the council. So, I appreciate the work and look forward to the continued efforts that you're making.
Anyone else? I just want to say thank you for all you do. You're one of two departments that have had to show up no matter what our community is going through. And you've done that, and you don't question it, you just do it. And I was over at your place today from 8 till noon. Santa Cops, where the alumni and other folks were helping wrap packages for kids, and the crew that works tonight gets to deliver those packages. And I didn't hear how many kids were helping this year, that you're helping this year, but I know the alumni help support that. And just thank you for all you all do for the community and make lives a little bit better for everybody else.
Thank you and thank you all for being, allowing me the opportunity tonight. Mayor, just to address that, if I may. The SROs really took the lion's share of this the last eight days. There are 42 families that we're going to be able to help tonight with over 100 kids, and those 100 kids are going to get over 1,000 gifts that were all wrapped today. And a huge thank, obviously, to the alumni, to the volunteers, police staff, as well as all city employees that were there to help us wrap these gifts. We couldn't do it. It's a huge collective effort, but I appreciate all the support that you guys give us here in Denver. So, thank you.
Seeing nothing else, have a great night. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the City Council on any topic they choose. This is not intended to be controversial, but rather a direct communication from the public to the representatives. There are three methods available for participation in the public comment. You may submit email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live through the City Clerk's office. And City Clerk, do we have somebody, some people signed up?
We do. We have 10 people who request to speak live, four voicemails to be played back, and then there were 12 emails submitted that were attached to the packet emailed to you earlier. So, our first live speaker, are you ready for the first live speaker? The first live speaker is Jessica True.
Hi, Jessica True. I can't tell how that is. 7488 Bradburn Boulevard. I'm here tonight to just talk about fairness. I think that the community has been through a lot in the last 15 months. And I know that just sitting here, one of the questions that I've been asked by people who are watching the live feed that I've been posting of your meetings is why we're wearing masks, but you're not? And it goes, it's a simple question, and it's not my primary point in this, but like, why is it that we're constantly asking you to follow your own rules and apply them fairly in the community? Another thing that I wanted to highlight is that when we were here for the water meeting, or excuse me, for the Uplands meeting, there was a gentleman who came and spoke on behalf of something called the Uplands Community Collective, Eric Cornacki. And Eric is, I don't understand if that's a real nonprofit, but it's being called a nonprofit. And I know that he's the executive director, and I also know that in his past, and he's currently under an agreement with the City of Denver as part of his previous nonprofit, Westwood Community Cooperative, which was a grocery store that he had signed to provide groceries for 25 years under an agreement where he got a, well, he got $3 million or $4 million, 1.7 of which was to buy a building, and that was an deed restricted lease to provide groceries to the community. So, the City of Denver gave him $1.7 million, he and his partner. And so, he did provide some grocery services to a very small grocery through a cooperative between 2014 and 2019-ish. I don't exactly know the dates. He seems to be, have left that group at some point, but he's still on the board and still is in this contract with Denver. And so, one of my issues is that very often, we see you, as the council, being asked to give money to nonprofits that are associated with people doing business in the city. And my ask, and I think this is fair, is that when Mr. Cornacki came here, he accused people in, from the community of being, essentially, he affiliated us with the KKK and called us racist nimby's. You know, the bottom line is that I don't think that we should be giving money from the city to a nonprofit where the person who is the executive director of that nonprofit is currently out of status on his previous project, which is still not resolved with the City of Denver. That's a terrible example of financial, financial fiscal responsibility, transparency, all of those big words that people use. But the bottom line is, you wouldn't give somebody money, more money, and I'm sure Denver wouldn't give him more money, and I don't see why we should, especially after he brought an untrue, obviously, it's, I don't think it's, there's, just what he said at council was really offensive and not, obviously not, I don't know why I have to say this, not true. Our community down here in the, in the south part of the city is actually a majority-minority community, so telling us that we're in our neighborhood, and it's also the most economically, it's the lowest income part of the city, it has the most seniors, and to tell our community that we are in the wrong for showing up and speaking is absolutely offensive. And, you know, I have, I can back up everything I just said to you. I'll send it to you in an email form to the whole council. Until he resolves his commitments that he made to the City of Denver, to the community of Westwood, I do not think the city should be giving him money for his elaborate gardens. And honestly, I have been a member and a volunteer in two cooperatives, and I've never seen one that costs $4 million for five years in my entire life. So, that just seems really excessive to me, and especially for a tiny grocery store and so on. So, you know, I really don't think that in the future, I mean, I will come and speak against it if you decide to give them money, but it's really not acceptable to give our public tax dollars to somebody who's a sort of co-collective or nonprofit that's sponsored by this Uplands project. And especially with him being in the leadership. I just don't feel like there's any trust financially. He doesn't have an MBA clearly, but still, when you have a nonprofit, you have a responsibility to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Jurgens.
Tom Jurgens, Westminster resident. Westminster City Council. The government of a city has certain fundamental obligations for its residents and neighbors. Safe water to drink and clean disposal of waste are two of them. Critical parts of our water infrastructure are undersized, antiquated, and in need of replacement. Ignoring our water infrastructure problems does not serve our residents and neighbors. Passing the buck to future city councils is political gimmickry. Ignoring the reality that we live in a locale with decreasing water resources is irresponsible. Playing favorites with policies is inexcusable. This council's elimination of the Tier 3 water rate benefits only 25% of our residents and picks favorites. It is not equitable. This, look, this council's elimination of the Tier 3 water rate and paying 3/4 of a million dollars for it out of reserves is fiscally unsound. What happens after one year? Another 3/4 of a million dollars of a bailout? This council's elimination of the Tier 3 water rate star's funding for necessary water infrastructure repair and replacement. This is not good governance. This council's short shrifting the water conservation incentives ignores our extensive and expanding drought conditions. This Tier 3 rate proposal is political theater. This chicanery must not be supported. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Stimson.
Madam Mayor, City Council staff. You'll hear plenty of commentary tonight from people concerned that the water rate proposals from council will unfairly impact those 75% of residents who do not incur Tier 3 rates, either because they have small properties or because they have responsibly repurposed the outdoor parts of their properties to more closely resemble the biome in which we live. You'll hear residents ask why the biggest water wasters are being given, through this vote, a dog whistle to let them know that their votes last November 2nd got them what they were promised by certain municipal candidates, permission to maintain a lifestyle that costs the city some 23% more than these voters have been paying in water bills. You'll be glad to hear, I won't even touch on these issues, not even in passing. I will instead be pointing out that this is absolutely unequivocally no time to be encouraging more water use in this region, in this era, than is absolutely necessary. And before the thought crosses your mind, let me be more specific. Water for drinking is necessary. Water for agriculture is necessary. Water for certain industrial and commercial processes is necessary. Water for health and cleaning is necessary. Water for maintaining a miniature climate zone, quite incongruous with the actual climate zone in which it exists, is not only unnecessary, it betrays a selfish and irresponsible attitude to one's neighbors near and far, and to the planet as a whole. Where are we here in Colorado in December 2021? According to the U.S. Drought Monitor Survey, we're in a condition described as severe drought and have been in that condition for a not-inconsiderable time. That's all right, so long as we can keep our lawns lush. We have experienced in the first two weeks in December, daytime temperatures in the 60s, dangerously unseasonable. No problem, so long as we can keep running those little artificial waterfalls in our front yards. The mountain snowpack is unprecedentedly low for this and several years past, directly impacting our water supply. Don't let that worry you. Just keep watering that acre of Kentucky bluegrass. In past remarks before this body, I have been reticent in describing the new water rates as a price signal to users. I think I should not be so reticent. We are in a part of the country in which, according to climatologists, the chief effects of climate change are not floods or tornadoes, but water stress. That is to say, a critically decreasing supply of water for all purposes, inadequate supplies for drinking, for farming, for cleaning. If you are finding yourselves with unusually high water bills, consider that it could just be that city staff are telling you that your use of water is quite out of step with reality. And, City Council, to vote to send a different kind of price signal that you Tier 3 folk weren't doing anything exorbitant or irresponsible with your property and can continue doing it ad infinitum, that is as irresponsible as anything I have seen. There are none so blind as those who will not see, or those of you who can see but choose not to. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Campbell.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give comments to the City Council. My name is Carol Campbell. I'm a 40-year resident of Westminster, and I currently reside in Legacy Ridge. Tonight, I'd like to make remarks about the two water issues that you have on the agenda tonight, the 10B Tier 3 water rates and the 10G water conservation and efficiency programs. When I last spoke to the council in November, I talked about the Front Range being in moderate drought and the city having good demonstration-type conservation programs for residents, such as lawn removal services, water-wise garden kits for irrigation consults, use of reclaimed water and landscape irrigation, water leak detection and repair services, and a neighborhood landscape enhancement grant program. Since then, as you know, our water situation has only worsened on the Front Range. It seems counterintuitive to me to get rid of Tier 3 billing for the largest water users in Westminster in the face of drought. Why should large water users get a break for using more than 21,000 gallons of water per month? What's the justification for this change in billing that benefits only 25% of our residents when we still need money from these fees to build a new drinking water facility? The present tier structure was established in 2019 based on a rate and fee cost-of-service study done by Raffatellus. This structure was developed in part to better align water rate revenues with the actual cost of delivering water, including utility, operating, and capital costs. In 2019, there was a 32% differential in what the customers were paying versus the city's cost to provide that water. The report recommended an eight-year phasing of rate increases starting in 2019 to manage that differential. The city has had a three-tier water pricing structure for residential customers for many years, and Tier 3 has always paid more than Tier 2 for water. The $750,000 payment from the reserves to cover the budget shortfall due to this reduction seems to be really ill-advised. If the city is concerned that residents cannot afford water, then it should evaluate which residents need financial or technical assistance to minimize their water bills. Alternatively, I think the city should contemplate a new rate and fee cost-of-service study and perform it to see what the justification is for any changes that you decide to make. I applaud the city's conservation efforts, as opposed, or as evidenced by the agenda item 10G, and support the increased funds that are proposed to help residents conserve. Unfortunately, the funds for this program are still insufficient, and only for single-family homes. Some of the older multifamily developments, such as the one in Legacy Ridge that I live in, cannot benefit from these programs, even though it would be beneficial to the city if these types of developments were more water-conscious. My HOA spends more than $30,000 per year on water for 103 condominiums and surrounding land, and the city has been less than helpful with requirements for ODP amendments, full inventories of plants in the development, all of which cost money that most HOAs do not have to spare. I again recommend, as I did in November, that these programs be increased and expanded to include communities such as mine that are not single-family homes.
The next speaker is Gloria.
The next speaker is Gloria Fisher. The next speaker, excuse me, is Tim Peg.
Hello. First off, I'd like to thank you for your vote last night towards the uplands development. I think this is good for prosperity in general in Westminster. But tonight, I am here to ask you to vote no on Councilor's Bill 51. In the lead-up to tonight's proposed water rate change, several people have expressed concerns about the indirect effects of water rates on property values by claiming that landscape choices which use more water help the value of neighboring property. But how are property values affected when we have a less reliable water utility? The current water rates were set after a 2018 cost of service study that this city paid for. If council has concerns about the 2018 cost of service study, what are the specific concerns? If those can be articulated and are reasonable, the correct process would be to hire another consultant to examine the report and produce a recalculation of the water rates while accounting for those concerns. But so far, council has not even expressed any belief that the cost of service study's premise or calculations are inaccurate, only concerned with the results. This council is concerned about the 25% of single-family homes affected by the Tier 3 water rate. However, reducing their burden does not decrease the cost of running a water utility. Reduced revenue likely means compromises in either the reliability or quality of water delivery. If Tier 3 pays less, other users necessarily must bear those costs instead. So a Tier 3 reduction would then be subsidized by those using less water. While city staff has stated that this will have no impact on Tier 1 and 2 users, I disagree. The risk of unreliable service is a real cost as well, and so you'd be asking all other water user classes and tiers to subsidize Tier 3 users through their toleration of a less reliable water supply. That means 75% of single-family homeowners will experience no benefits in terms of cost, but would likely experience degraded water service so that the other 25% don't have to pay their fair share. To make this less abstract, let's talk specifically about some Tier 3 users who made themselves public faces of the recall attempt and shared their water bills with various media outlets. These three people live on lots between .47 and 1 acre in size. Their properties are evaluated between $700,000 and $1 million by their respective county assessors. My property is .16 acres in size and evaluated at about $325,000. My landscape is nevertheless a luxury, and I should not be expected to cover the costs of other folks' luxuries. But that's exactly what you'd be asking for, to reduce the burden on those with larger properties. How is a system where those using less water subsidize those using more fiscally or ethically acceptable? Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Michelle Zodzik.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually here on behalf of the City of Westminster Inclusivity Board. We have prepared a letter for you with a recommendation regarding the Tier 3 water rate suspension. Dear Mayor McNally, Mayor Protamdamott, and members of the City Council, we as the inclusivity board strongly urge that you postpone your vote on the suspension of water rates for Tier 3 customers. We've heard many stories of how water rates in Westminster are driving people out of their homes, making them choose between paying their water bill and paying for other necessities such as medicine, electricity, and shelter. These are sad and troubling stories from individuals and families who clearly need relief from their city government. We do not believe that these stories are confined exclusively to Tier 3 water users, however. These stories compel us to urge you to find a way to determine who needs water rate payment relief regardless of the designation of the tier of the water user, so that decisions of this magnitude can be made from extensive and thoughtful data collection and analyses around the potential financial hardships that affect those at every tier level. In this way, we would not be inadvertently excluding those in different tiers of water usage from the potential relief that they so need. Finding a way to measure the possible extent of these challenges should be of the highest priority and serves as a testament to your roles as stewards of all residents of Westminster. In addition to information gathering, we would like to recognize the growing need for water conservation efforts in our city and across the state of Colorado. As such, we recommend a focus on conservation assistance programs for those most affected by the rise in water rates. For example, zero escaping has always been an option for less water use, but the programs currently in place leave most of the cost of such efforts to the homeowner. We believe that city staff should be directed to take time during low-water-usage months in winter to develop additional or enhanced programs for long-term solutions to high-water bills, especially for those people on fixed income with large lots and/or HOA requirements. Essentially, we are concerned that the vote being pushed for tonight does not provide direct of relief nor a long-term equitable solution, particularly for those who may most need it. We believe that an equitable and evidence-based approach will help all of our city residents cope with the rising cost of water in Westminster, driven by aging infrastructure that will only increase with time. Thank you for your consideration on behalf of the inclusivity board of the City of Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Again, I'm here to talk about the systematic rental inspection program that we have. I last talked to you on December 13th. I asked if it was a participatory program, if we're allowed to put any input from the side of the people who are being put under the scrutiny of the city to get their properties inspected. I've not heard anything back. I'm not sure. I know you've been very busy with the uplands program and stuff like that, but I would have at least expected a phone call or something. I don't do texts, I don't do emails, I do regular telephone, or my home address would work just fine as well. But one thing I'd like to point out on that, we manage a couple fourplexes here in Westminster. And I've always told them, if God waters, I'll mow. But that's not good enough for the City Council, or not Council for the city program. They're requiring that I keep my 80% of yard, it's required to be grass, green, and I've argued with them, I'm not, I'm just not going to do it. We cannot afford it. But that goes back to the systematic program, that we have all these rules that you're telling us we have to spend money on water that we don't need or want. When, please let me know, we're going to look at those rules and possibly revise them so they're a little more fair for the people, for the community, for the people that are in apartments that do have grass, to be able to do what they need to do. I don't want to raise rents just so as they can have grass to look at. My tenants don't care about grass to look at. They care about a safe, clean, and affordable neighborhood. That's what we've been trying to provide for them. Our two basic expenses is obviously property taxes, which have gone up significantly because of that, and dealing with some of this stuff that's just kind of ridiculous as far as watering the grass or putting rocks in areas and delineating between the rocks and the grass and this hodgepodge of rules that we have on the inspection code. So I'm hoping to hear from the City Council or from the city staff or somebody and find out if there's a chance for discussion on some of these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Manager Andrews, can we be sure somebody gets back a hold of him? The next speaker is Wayne Perkins. Wayne Perkins. The next speaker is Karina Gunther.
Hi, I'm Karina Gunther, and I live down in the south area of Westminster, near Sunny Second and Sheridan. In the past 10 years, the streets outside of my front, both in the main street and right and straight in front of me, have required repairs to the water pipes because they burst. There was one day when it was rather interesting waking up and going out and seeing fountains coming out of my street, down some cracks and watching them slowly grow. The repairs were done quickly, but on the other hand, it required digging up the street both times, and then apparently the first repairs didn't take that. Repairing one section caused another section to break, caused another section to break. So each time, they had to patch and then tear up the street three times. At, I don't know how much that cost, but that's got to be thousands of dollars. A lot of my tax money going to that. And that's why I oppose reducing the Tier 3 water rates, because we need that money to fix our infrastructure, do these basic repairs, and maybe, I believe that there was somewhere that we actually need to replace a lot of our pipelines because they are so old. And so we need this money to reduce, to prevent all of this extra cost of having to repair things as they break, which if anybody has a house knows that you need to repair things as soon as possible, otherwise the cost just expands and explodes. So I would really, that's what we need that money for, is repairing our infrastructure and upgrading our pipelines. I believe, according to the figures I understand, the Tier 3 will impact only 7,500 people or 7,500 houses. And then yesterday, you voted to add more development, and this will require more water when we are in a drought, and it's very likely that drought conditions are going to become our new normal due to reduced snowpack over the years. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope you vote, and I hope you vote no on that.
That was the last speaker. I'm going to call again, is Wayne Perkins here? That was the last speaker we had to sign up live. And did we have voicemails? We do, we have four voicemails to play back.
Message to Westminster City Council. This is Gary Archuleta, longtime resident of Westminster, over 50 years at 9360 Quitman Street. I do not believe who in the world came up with the idea to incentivize the biggest users to use more water, which is what you're doing by giving opportunities to discount the Tier 3 users to go down to Tier 2. How ridiculous is that? You know, all you're doing is encouraging the biggest users to use more water. How stupid is that? It just does not make any sense. Truly appreciate it. My callback number is 303-426-7850. Thank you very much for listening to this. Goodbye.
Hello, this is Sherlin Kissler. I'm calling in regards to the city water rates, which I think are unfair by reducing the rate on high users. This is not encouraging them to save on water use. However, I am a low water user between 1,000 to 3,000 gallons, it's usually between 1 and 2, and I am on a fixed income rate. So I am retired, and it's getting tougher and tougher to pay these bills. So I would like to recommend that you reduce the water rates for Tier 1 and 2 especially, and Tier 3 could also be reduced but at a lower rate to help them to understand that they need to reduce their water rate, because us lower users are already using less water amounts. So again, thank you for your time and look forward to the outcome of the meeting. Thank you. My phone number is 720-639-4304 if any questions. Bye-bye.
Hello, this is Adam Barajas, and I'm calling to voice my opposition to the reduction in water rates for Tier 3 water customers. I would just hope that the City Council can take into consideration the entire population of Westminster and not just a select few who use a certain amount of water. It seems that this proposal seems a little rushed and certainly not geared with an equitable mindset and viewed from a lens of helping every citizen of Westminster. So again, this is me voicing my opposition to the upcoming vote. I would love for every City Council member to vote a resounding no on this upcoming vote. Thank you.
This is Ellen Buckley. First off, I would like to thank Councilors Baker and Azidi for voting against the horrendous uplands proposal. Secondly, I'm calling to ask you all to vote no on Councilor's Bill Number 51, getting rid of the Tier 3 water rate. We are in a drought, and this is incredibly foolish, to get rid of an incentive for high-water users to conserve. Also, you're spitting in the face of your city staff who deal with water and know what we need, and also the entire people who are on the task force that chose the site for the new water treatment plant. This was a years-long process, and you're just saying, let's undo it all and cost a lot of money by canceling contracts? This is completely outrageous. Stop it.
Thank you. That brings us to report to city officials. City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all of the speakers who spoke tonight, both on voicemail and in person. Thank you for coming tonight. This is the second night for our City Council, and so thank you to Mayor and Mayor Protam and Council for coming tonight. Very long week for everybody, but particularly, we always listen to the comments provided and do follow-up, and I commit that we will do that for those of you who've asked for follow-up on your items. Tonight, Mayor, Mayor Protam and City Councilors, I'll focus my manager's report on the actions that the city is undertaking on water in Westminster, based on City Council's direction. There's an information agenda memo in the packet tonight entitled "Water in Westminster Update" that provides a detailed list of actions the staff has taken at Council's direction following the November 29th Water in Westminster special study session. Specifically, as referenced by a number of speakers this evening, Item 10B on the agenda presents draft Councilor's Bill Number 51 that would make the Tier 3 water rate equal to the Tier 2 water rate, and that would be effective January 22nd if Council acts on that tonight. Staff has also issued stop-work orders on the 3 Water 2025 design contracts, excuse me, currently in progress, including the replacement water treatment facility. Also, the tour of the Semper Water Treatment Facility, the existing city facility, one of our two plants, where City Council has been confirmed for the week of January. So we will be happy to host Council and take you through that facility. In response to the written proposal from Councilors Baker and Seymour to further reduce the 2022 water and sewer rates, staff is actively developing an analysis of the Councilor's specific proposal as well as other related options, and this analysis will be ready for City Council's review in mid-January. Staff is also working on the scope to reevaluate the current Semper and Municipal Service Center location as an alternative site for a replacement water facility, with an update on this to come back to Council shortly. And finally, staff is working on setting up a roundtable discussion with City Council and former city officials and outside industry experts to discuss water in Westminster and gain valuable insight in the city's deliberations. For the benefit of the public, all of the staff responses to City Council's questions about water in Westminster is being posted at cityofwestminster.us/water. You can find all of the answers as we progress, and that's a living document and that's updated regularly to add information as the deliberations proceed. And with that, Mayor, I conclude my comments this evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Report to City Council. Report to city council. Anybody? Councillor Yuzadi?
Thank you, mayor. Real quick, I just wanted to read, to echo your comments to city manager. When we have public comments, I strongly believe we need to follow up with those. Craig Russell, I've seen you the last month come up here. Just one example, we need to follow up with them. I'm not sure if we can fix this process, but every single person that comes up here needs to be followed up on. Let's see, see what we can do about that. I just wanted to give thank you to the public. We went through many hours together, the last seven days. And I just want to thank you all for coming out, for giving your input. There's lots of emotions flying around today, but just please keep engaging, keep coming to these council meetings and keep reaching out to us. We are listening, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem DeBuck?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming here tonight and enjoying the last meeting of twenty-twenty-one. So we won't see you folks again till after Christmas. So I hope that you have time to spend with your family and enjoy the new year and we'll see you in twenty-twenty-two. And the other thing I want to reiterate again, thank you to the folks that will be spending the holidays working for you, the residents, that being police fire. And I think we missed our public works earlier. And I think that's one group that also has to work around the clock to make sure that we have city services, that we work so hard to get to you folks. So with that, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Councillor Baker?
All right, thank you, mayor. I wanted to thank city staff because we are moving forward with some very difficult problems. Problems that we heard quite clearly from the voters how they want solved. I also want to recognize how hard it is to bring our true values to life. Our values of honoring diversity, our values of inclusion. Those are hard to bring to life when there are true differences between factions in this city. But I have optimism for the future. I think it'll be great. Thank you.
Councillor Seymour?
Thank you, mayor. I too want to thank everyone who's come out and I too want to recognize that we do have a new system processing for people who have specific asks. And then we are getting followed up on those when they're done. And so we may have missed an opportunity with someone who doesn't use emails. So I'm sure we'll, we'll find another way to communicate that. We kind of get into the email and texting habit. And I know that happens at my office sometimes and I pick up the phone sometimes. So we appreciate staff working for it on that, on that process. I too am thankful for the last meeting of twenty-twenty-one. You know, everybody said twenty-twenty year was a year to forget and then we should forget this one. And maybe twenty-twenty-two being an even year, we'll be back on kilter. So I look forward to a great twenty-twenty-two and I hope all of you have the opportunity to spend quality time with your family. And also thanks to those three departments who keep us running and safe year-round, twenty-four-seven.
Seeing no other comments, that brings us to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a group of routine matters that to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Counsel at this time is, does anyone wish to remove any items to separate discussion? Councillor Yuzadi?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to discuss this item, the de-icing.
Which one?
The de-icing.
Which number is it?
It's the only item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking ahead to our long list, I'm sorry. So you want to discuss that?
Yeah, just have a few questions.
Okay.
I'm not sure if anyone here, city manager, can answer, but can you please explain the de-icing and snow removal budget process in general? During the campaign, lots of folks came up to me and said in their neighborhoods, they don't feel they're getting the right service. So I'm curious what the process is, what drives, what are the drivers of quality service? Is it de-icing materials, is it labor? You know, where's the gap? Because we need to make the process more equitable across all neighborhoods.
Thank you for the question, councillor. I'd like to ask our director of Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Max Kirschbaum, to come up to the podium and he'll provide that answer for you. Thank you.
Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities Director. Can you be a little more specific on what the question is? I'm not sure if I understand your question.
So it's a two-part. First is overall, what is the budget? And second question is referring to the process of when, how, when, when, how, where regarding service? And have you heard, I guess the third question would be have you, I'm guessing you've received comments from the public on snow removal and de-icing in their neighborhood? Maybe some folks who are not happy with the current level of service? What are you hearing? What are the metrics? Do you track metrics? Just whatever you can tell me to educate me.
If I could start with the second part first. We strictly follow city council's policy on snow removal, which is an established written document that is posted on our website. In that, it describes very specifically the levels of service according to the volume of traffic on a roadway. There we have priorities that are priority one, two, and three. Generally, generally speaking, those are arterial streets, collector streets and neighborhood streets. Neighborhood streets are classified as a priority three. And it gets a little bit more complicated, but generally speaking, our level of service for neighborhood streets is that we plow those streets upon eight inches of accumulation. And the reason we use eight inches of accumulation is over decades of experience of snow removal in this city, what we have found is that for every person that would like to see more snow removal on their residential street, there's an equal and opposite number who would like us to not do that plowing. And principally, the reason for that is when you plow on neighborhood streets, inevitably it either creates a winrow that gets onto sidewalks or across driveways. So that's usually where half the people like it, half the people don't. So we set, we set a standard of eight inches on residential streets. That is the posted policy. Secondly, the question about our budget. Budget is somewhat embedded for snow removal because obviously all of the salary costs are born, are a fixed cost, a sunk cost, because we have a fixed labor workforce. It's interesting to know that the labor workforce for our snow removal system is comprised of one-third by our streets, operations, employees. And actually, two-thirds of our manpower force for snow removal are utility workers. It's a combined public works and utilities effort every time it snows. So that's the labor piece of that. Equipment is part of a replacement program that's managed out of the general capital fund for equipment replacements. So that really then leaves the other main and major cost of snow removal is the cost of materials, the de-icing materials, both solid and liquid. And that's what's before you tonight. We acquire those materials by the most cost-effective means available and we do that in two ways. One, we do a bulk of our purchases during summer months to load up our salt storage facilities because time is not an issue during the summer. And that's also when you get the best pricing on material. But as the season goes on, we always have continuous demand for material as we consume it. So secondly, the system that we use, we belong to and use cooperative purchasing agreements. One is called MAPO, which is a state, it's a statewide organization. And through CDOT, through those two sources, we use the pricing that is set. And that's what is before you tonight is an authorization to continue to buy our both solid and liquid de-icing materials using the most cost-effective method through those cooperative purchases. And there's a provision in here that also asks you that if for whatever reason those two sources cannot deliver in a timely manner, that we do have secondary and tertiary sources that we can go to, to obtain material.
Thank you for that. How many workers? So you mentioned it's a combined effort. What's the average number of workers? So on a given, so if it snows eight inches tomorrow, what's that look like?
We have eighteen plows. Those eighteen plows are divided up. Also, it's, that's also described on the website. You can look on the website and look at those eighteen areas. Generally, each plow is responsible for between approximately thirty to forty lane miles each. And depending on the snow, they may plow all of those or they may not plow all of those streets. It takes us, there are about sixty to seventy employees that are involved in the effort to do the plowing on, at our best. What we normally have as we do this year because of a high level of turnover that everybody has experienced during COVID, we always have a training pipeline. Meaning you will often see a second plow operator in the cab because one of those is a trainee and one of those is a veteran. We do not let anyone operate a plow on city streets until they are certified to do so by a qualified veteran. And they are all licensed, commercial drivers, licensed, level A operators.
So in a bad snowstorm, if a snowstorm occurred tomorrow, eighteen plows will go out. How do you distribute those services? Is that, do you have like, is there a system for that or is it just neighborhood by neighborhood? Do they have a?
The eighteen plows are assigned to their eighteen plow areas that are listed on the map. And those are, those are distributed in a way where there is generally an equal amount or a similar, I'll say, I'll say similar, similar amount of priority ones, twos, and threes streets. So that each of those plow operators and plow areas are being plowed pretty similarly at about the same rate. We have snow supervisors that manage that operation around the clock. And they are very attentive to what's happening area by area because sometimes even in a city that of our size, snowfall is not evenly distributed. Wind is not evenly distributed. So sometimes plows will be moved from one area to another to get to that similar level of service. We strive to provide the same level of service across the city.
Okay, just a couple more questions. I'm sure, I'm sure everyone is super excited about this conversation. How do you track comments from the public? So have you been tracking? Do you hear from the public who, some people who may say, well, my neighborhood's never plowed. It's never de-iced. What, where and how do you track that?
When, whenever there is a snow event, you can rest assured that all priority ones and all priority twos are properly plowed and salted and treated. There's little doubt to that. I don't think any resident in our city would doubt that. For residential streets, we have a very detailed system by which we can electronically and through radio communication, we track every single priority three residential street that is plowed as it is plowed. And we do that to ensure that we don't miss a street or a cul-de-sac. As you could imagine, this is where things get most difficult is when we're plowing the priority three streets. Especially, let's say you're doing it at night in limited visibility and you are new on your route. Imagine that difficulty. So that's why we track the completion of each one of those so that somebody back in the office is paying attention to every street and every zone and can point out to the driver, should they miss a street or a cul-de-sac? So they can loop back and pick that up.
So I'm guessing by priority, you mean since the snow is even, is not evenly distributed, the areas with the highest snowfall, you go there first? Or what's your criteria for those three priority rings?
Well, I'm not sure if I understand the question, but our drivers, even if there's greater than eight inches, our first responsibility is make sure that the priority one and two streets are properly plowed and treated. When, when we get to a point where that is adequately met, then the driver in that area starts working on the priority three streets in his area.
How are you defining the prior, those three priority rings? So what is priority one? What does that mean?
So as I said, priority one is usually arterial streets. Those are the major streets. It also addresses school zones. It addresses hospitals. It addresses all, all streets of a, of a certain traffic volume.
And what is priority three?
Priority three is residential streets. So inside neighborhoods.
Last question, I promise. What do you do with sleep? So when it's just ice, it's less than eight inches. What's, what's the criteria for you going out there to de-ice when there's not much snow, but it's dangerous?
De-icing is part of the process. It doesn't, sometimes it doesn't matter how much it snows. It matters what is the condition of the street. That is the way we handle priority one and two. It would be, it would be unusual to go into priority three streets that without a, an adequate snow event to do treatment on those streets, but it could happen.
Okay, thank you.
I just was going to say, the map really helps people because I know I'm on a two. If I haven't seen a plow on my street, I know the Sheridins, the hundred-and-twelfth Westminster Boulevards, I do not want to be there if my street has not yet gone through. So that helps. And a priority would be sometimes along Sims with all that wind. We've had cars buried and you have to send everybody there to help find people.
Yep. This year will also be a little bit more difficult. If you, if you've watched some of the news from CDOT, you know that they are as much as eight hundred drivers short across the state to do their winter mission. So they too have a priority system. And in our area, prior, their priorities are I seventy and I twenty-five first. A US thirty-six is also plowed by a contract to CDOT. But those are their first priorities. Other CDOT streets within our city include Wadsworth, Federal, Sheridan, and one hundred and twentieth. We, Sheridan is a split responsibility from about eighty-sixth street. I'm sorry, Eighty-sixth Avenue North is a city responsibility. And south of that is a CDOT responsibility. I bring that up because for CDOT, Sheridan is a tertiary priority. And given the, their shortage in drivers this year, I would expect that to be apparent when we look at the secondary and tertiary priorities that CDOT has in our city.
So if a resident, if there, if there is a route missed and a resident, one needs to reach out to the city, is there some kind of emergency number that they can call where someone can come by and do their street? Or some way of reaching out?
There's a, Public Works and Utilities has a twenty-four-seven number. It's usually, we can be reached at three oh three six five eight twenty-five hundred.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem DeBuck?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt consent agenda item 8A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item consent agenda item 8A. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker, did you have something or you just, okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero roll call vote.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight for new business. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd already, that's true. Mr. Mayor Protam Demat.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to confirm the appointment of Abby Fitch as the new city clerk for the city of Westminster.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to move to confirm the appointment of Abby Fitch as new city clerk for the city of Westminster. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protam.
I just would like to thank Abby for stepping into this role. I think that we've seen a clear improvement in the clerk's office since you took the helm in what is a chaotic time. But I appreciate the fact that you're willing to take this role and I look forward to you continuing to make the clerk's office better for the citizens.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
No.
The motion passes on a six one vote.
And welcome.
Thank you.
10A, Councilor's Bill Number 50. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 50 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds from the State of Colorado's Department of Human Services Office of Behavioral Health Co-Responders Services Program grant in the amount of $318,000 to the 2022 budget of the general fund.
Counselor, or Mayor Protam.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselor's Bill Number 50. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Numella.
Just had a quick question on this. Do we, the, the level of service that is provided with this contract, have we found over the past couple of years that it's sufficient? Or is it kind of hard to tell? Or, you know, what is the process to determine if we have enough or not?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. We have tonight Chief Hubbard, perhaps he can join us or Acting Deputy Chief Edna Hendershot, who's also works very closely on this. I know this is a very popular program. I think you'll hear from the chief on how effective it is.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, Counsel, I would turn it over to Acting Deputy Chief Edna Hendershot. But to your point, Counselor, we're not under contract per se. It's more of a grant. There is a contract involved, but we would like to increase services because of the services we've received have paid off exponentially for clients that use it. So.
Thank you, Counselor, for that question. We have seen tremendous usage of this program. Currently, we have two co-responders and a supervisor on this grant subcontracted through Community Reach Center. And each month, these two co-responders, and we've been full staffed and then at half staff periodically, it's a very popular need, I think, we're seeing across the country, really. So hiring and maintaining the level of service and those workers has been challenging. They handle approximately, amongst the two of them, well over 100, upwards of 130 calls a month and referrals to the program. So we are looking to expand the program. We would like to someday, if I can say, have these be part of our, our city workforce in partnership with other departments, the fire department, et cetera. And right now, we have a case manager that is being funded through Community Reach on loan to us, as well as we're currently looking for a third co-responder. So our total staff for the co-responder program would be three co-responders, a case manager, and a part-time supervisor. And I can tell you, ma'am, it's, they're constantly working from the fire department, police department, and other, the municipal court and other places throughout the city. We certainly could use them much more than we are able to with the amount of time that they can spend, their workday, et cetera. Did I answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, you definitely did. And I look forward to hearing, you know, or having the opportunity to see if we can expand it. So, thank you.
Mayor Protam Demat.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for bringing this back. I think at this point, I may be one of the only ones when we first started talking about mental health as a council. And for those who don't know, part of the reason I brought up was a very personal reason that had to do with a teenage daughter of mine, excuse me, in mental health crisis. In, in that situation, she ended up cuffed in the back of one of our police cars my first year on council. With that said, I understand why and explained to her why. And it's a matter of resources that we provide to you all because somebody in mental health crisis does need to be safe as well as the people around them. So this is part of the rethinking how we deal with those kinds of things, not just as a city, but as a society. So I am excited to see this continuing to go on as well as expand into fire, police, and I'd like to see any other services at some point that touch the public. Because at the end of the day, it's such a crisis and such a widespread thing in society that it touches anybody who touches the public. So I just want that said because it is a different council and I'm, I'm glad to hear that so far this group very much cares about mental health as much as I do and that we have staff that does the same.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to agree with Mayor Protam. I think mental health and co-responder, this co-responder program is, should be one of our highest priorities as a city to expand. And I have a question. Have we looked into permanent staffing for co-responders? Is that something that council has looked into in the past?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. It's certainly something we've been actively discussed, discussing with the chief and Acting Deputy Chief. So those discussions will continue. And if, if we're able to put something together, it would be included in a submission in a city council budget package. So if we put something forward, it would be in the next budget request.
So there's, there's 318,000, that's an annual cost?
So that's through the grant, sir, that we have with the opposite behavioral health. So they're funding the program now. So that's what I'm asking council to provide immediately, and then we will be covered through the grant for reimbursement, if you will.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking forward to seeing that in the, the next budget process. But thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote.
That brings us to Counselor's Bill 51. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 51 on first reading, implementing water rate adjustments for 2022 by amending section eight dash seven dash seven of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselor's Bill Number 51 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been brought up and, and also heard as far as dealing with tier one only. That was not an intent, the sole intent of water rate adjustments during the water discussion, the staff brought to us five actionable items that could be moved on immediately. And this was just one of those items. The other items included some of the contractual parts of Water 2025, fixed monthly billing process with the new billing programs and the new water meters that we have so that we have a, a month in and month out, similar water billing. So we don't have excess days on those, which then in some cases could lead someone to another tier. So the level or tier three water rates that's staff brought to us as far as levelizing those at a tier two rate were a known amount and a fixed quantity that could be identified. And so that was and is intended to only be the first step as interim city manager Andrews mentioned, there is a memo circulating and staff is working on other thoughts for tier two and some of the fixed components for tier one so as to deal equitably across all levels. And we should be seeing those numbers in January so we can also have a, a discussion on those two. So this is in mind, just the first step.
Mayor Protam Demat.
First, thank you to everybody who came out. And I understand that this is an issue that drives a lot of passion on all sides of it. I think as Counselor Seymour said, this isn't the end of what, what we're doing and looking at. I think if you, you really look at some of the other action items, such as pausing the Water 2025, that's one of the big drivers of, of where the water rates are as shared to us by staff. So trying to figure out what the path forward is that does address the concerns of the community as well as this council and staff as far as how do we maintain the infrastructure but maintain affordability? And if you had listened to the water discussion, one of the things I was concerned about long term is making sure that we do have some stopgap or conservancy as far as making sure people aren't overusing past what they need for their, their lots. But I believe from what I've seen and heard from many, many residents is that we missed the mark as far as how big that third tier is. And when it was implemented from the changes from 2018, we've seen that unequitably hit certain people with large light lot sizes. And if you look at the map of the people that that hit, it's across the city. It's across all different economic demographics and that's my concern. So I'm willing to move forward with this as a stopgap. I do anticipate that we'll reevaluate this in the next year as we reevaluate all these other issues that are in front of the council and the city.
Counselor Numella.
So at the top of this agenda item, it cites the, the strategic plan goal that this agenda item is theoretically supporting. And it says, advance the city's long-term sustainability to provide ongoing excellence in city services and a well-planned community that meets the needs of residents now and in the future. This is not providing any forward thinking in terms of our long-term sustainability. I understand that, that council is trying to address the need from community, that they've heard from community members regarding the water rates. And however, doing, taking this approach without having any data behind it and understanding, well, what does this mean to our long-term viability of our infrastructure and our savings for that and our ability to cover the needs both short term and long term? And we, we have something else on the agenda tonight, it's like a $6 million improvement to a water and sewer line. So it's, it continues to come, these, $6 million. And that's just one line improvement. So I, you know, I look forward to working with the council to analyze and understand what is the true need, what is an approach that is well-informed by data and that we can make a well-informed choice over what are, what are the, what are the benefits? What are the impacts to our overall system? And we can explain that to the community. A lot of the community members that I spoke to over this past summer, they wanted to be just included in the, in the solution, included in the conversation. And I don't think this is providing that as, that either. So, and I don't know if the community understands that this, the intent of this was to be temporary, a temporary relief. I see in comments from the community that it's construed as a long-term fix, a long-term fix that is not informed by any data. And, you know, this, our water conservation, our water use, there are so many different factors that go into this, that we should be looking at all of these and helping that, helping have those to help us inform our, our ultimate decision. And there's so many layers to this that we should be tackling this, you know, with the inclusivity board's message earlier this evening, there are so many different levels on which we should be tackling this with helping provide programs to those that are low in fixed income to be able to make those changes. We have some later on on this agenda memo to approve, but it's, you know, it's not enough for what we need. And, you know, if we're looking at a temporary relief, it should truly be temporary. It should be 30 to 60 days that we can renew. And if it's, you know, we're looking at tier three, that's only again 25% at best of our water users, is that truly giving the relief to the people that we've been hearing from so much over the past year or two? So that is why I will not be supporting this, but I will say, I again, look forward to working with my colleagues to come up with a, with an approach in the future.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so like my colleagues have expressed, you know, tier three reduction, this is a temporary relief. The problem is it's not, it's not equitable, right? And you've, you've heard me say this before, and I said this three weeks ago with the, in the water session. When we look at the city, you know, I knocked 11,000 doors, okay? And I know firsthand that most of the impacted residents, they weren't all in tier three. They were across all tiers. So tier one, tier two, tier three. It doesn't make sense to me why we would rush this when we know that we are going through fact-finding sessions, we're going through tours, where we are doing a lot of work behind the scenes as a council to get to the bottom of what are the facts? What is the basic need here? What's the minimum, the minimum cost of service? What are, you know, even down to simple things like what's the population of the city? I've, I've asked that in every council session almost, and we're getting different answers. So we're trying to standardize and really rationalize the answer so we can make a rational decision, which is why rushing a tier three reduction, a tier three only reduction tonight when we could literally wait, you know, you've heard the counselors say that in January, we're, we're going to get a proposal for all tiers. So let's wait for that. Let's give relief to everyone or no one. It's winter time. This would save $6 per month right now if this, this reduction, that's, it, it, it doesn't feel right from a decision-making standpoint. So I would hope and plead to my counselors once again, let's wait on this, let's make the right decision, not the fast decision. And it's only a few weeks away. If we are going to see this memo, let's, let's do it right. The, the citizens want us to, they elected us because they want the decisions to be made right. They are fed up, they are frustrated, they want us to make the right decision, not the fast one. So that's just my plea. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Demat.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for your, your perspective. I will say I have a, a couple of opposing perspectives as far as this not being data-driven. This was data-driven as far as the recommendation that was something that the city could take on as a temporary solution while we look at other solutions. It wasn't arbitrary, it was measured out. The dollars were something that the city could take that impact and it wasn't going to greatly damage what we're doing and managing our utility. That was shared by staff. That's why I'm comfortable with it. Do not at all feel that this is rushed for me. I know I'm not new to council. I've been here since these water rates were put in place. And I was opposed to them because I was afraid that they would do what we've seen them do. They have hurt our residents in a way that I do not think was the intent. However, it was my concern and I think that we've seen that come to fruition. It's going to take time for us to come up with the right mix, but I don't think that that means that if we have a solution that is driven by data given to us by staff. that means that if we have a solution that is driven by data given to us by staff, that it is something we could do, that it is irresponsible any means to be able to take those, those steps, just like I think that I am comfortable pausing things so that we can evaluate and find out where we need this to go because it's a big lift, it's going to take a lot of time to go through all this different data and decide is a different path, a new way, to the point of one of the speakers shared, the process to choose the 2025 site was over a year's process. So for us to think that if we're going to reevaluate that process, that's going to take some time, just like the current plan did. So I hope people understand that and understand that for me to support this, it wasn't just arbitrary, it's over four years of watching this issue and sitting through hours and hours of water meetings to come up with my decision.
Can I ask Mr. Kirschbaum a quick question? You can just say yes or no, Mr. Kirschbaum. We received, I think it was three maps from, I can't remember the dates, was it 17, 18, 19, or 18, 19, 20 that you shared, all the dots? They were eye-opening to me because I had a perception the blue dots would be in certain areas. The blue dots, which mean third tier, are everywhere. There is not a place in this city, there is not blue dots. And so are those on the website so people can see them? Sorry, I didn't mean to make you get up.
I'm happy to get up. All the information that was provided to you, I think that came to you today. Everything that goes to you in a forum like that, also in working with the Innovation and Communication Division, is also being posted somewhere on that Water in Westminster tile button on our website. Yes, it will all be there. And the reason for the, obviously, it's interesting to look year by year, how those compare and what you recall from, was it a dry year, wet year, dry year, that kind of thing, those are all good information, but just bear in mind that those dots, the reason they are so distributed is they represent any, anytime an individual goes over 20,000, it's not maybe someone who is, might be somebody who breaks 20,000 gallons once, not necessarily those who are always over 20,000.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, sorry, I didn't see. Councillor Smith?
Thank you. You know, councillor Izadi, I understand your thought as far as not wanting to rush things. I think in previous councils, it's felt rushed on what's been brought forward, and I think that there is a cadence to pausing and thinking things through. And with this one in particular, I looked at all the options, have synthesized the data, have looked at this as a workable solution, tried to have it be a workable solution for the two years that I've been on council. And we still don't have quite an answer as far as providing a solution on equitable relief right now. And so with that, I think that I have enough information right now, with the information that staff has provided, with the information that we've talked about as a council, at least the two years that I've been here, with hours and hours of water discussions, I think that I have enough information to go ahead and move forward with this. I think that we, you have to look at all the variables, what we're possibly saving in pausing contracts for using some reserve dollars. It's not a, a long-term solution, it is a temporary, and I hate to use the word temporary because temporary doesn't have necessarily an expiration on it, but it's an option right now that we need to move as a council for, that we have continued to hear at the doorsteps of our residents. And so I will be a yes vote on this tonight.
Any further discussion? Oh, councillor Nummella?
God, I had a few questions. One question that I would like to, you know, is part of trying to understand the impact of this, I know that council, I'm sorry, that staff asked or provided us with the financial impact to our revenues for this coming year based on this tier reduction, and it was approximately $750,000. What I don't understand is the impact to what we would have otherwise been able to fund with those dollars?
Thank you, councillor. I can answer this, and then Mr. Kirschbaum and his team is ready also to go into more detail. But the funding for this measure would come from the reserve in the utilities, would not impact the capital program.
And what are those reserves?
That is an excellent question. I'm going to ask either Mr. Kirschbaum or Mr. Dorr or Mr. Lindsay to join us at the podium, talk about the, the size perhaps of the, of the reserve and its accumulation.
So the, the offset in revenue for this fiscal calendar year 2022, that estimated net difference in revenue is the $750,000. Council has also approved a capital improvement program budget that includes several projects in the water fund and in the wastewater fund. Those projects will be able to move forward, and we will be able to execute, and the, the, any, any balances needed would come out of the, the capital project reserve to ensure that those projects can be funded. You'll notice if you look in, in the budget book that was approved by city council, you'll see, if you look in the utility funds section of capital improvement program, there, unlike the other funds, there are no projects listed for 23 and beyond. And part of the reason for that is the, the decisions that are being reevaluated for Water 2025. Until we know what city council desires to do moving forward, it's very difficult to anticipate what those project budgets could be and what projects would be able to be paid for. The money that's in the capital reserves today, both in the water and the wastewater fund, are there because they were, there is a deliberate building of cash in order to be able to fund the construction of Water 2025 with an appropriate amount of cash so that when we also sought the issuance of debt, we have an appropriate ratio of cash and debt and a favorable rate and repayment period. So the answer to that, so the answer to that question is, for 23 and beyond, you don't see any projects in there.
So the $750,000 is being pulled from the, essentially the cash reserves that would have helped us set the stage for the Water 2025 plant and the debt service?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, in order to continue to fund the, the full execution of everything in the 22 budget, the line items, both for water and sewer, which added up to, I think, a total of about 29 million between the two funds, water, I think water was about 20 and sewer was about 9 million. To ensure that those happen, some capital reserve will be drawn to make sure that all those projects can be awarded and executed.
And the, you know, you mentioned we're not planning beyond 23. So how long does it take for, once you've identified a capital improvement that's needed, let's say a water line along Sheridan, how long does it take from the point in which you've allocated funding to the point in which you can actually put a shovel in the ground?
Well, in the case of Water 2025, we're on year six and haven't throw ground on anything. So, I mean, it can be as short as, you know, we have some small-scope projects that can be as short as a year, and we have others that can span something like the five, six, seven years before we actually get to a shovel in the ground.
Is there a potential if we continue to subsidize our water rates, that we would have a delay in infrastructure improvements?
Can you tell me what you mean by subsidize?
Well, I am characterizing the $750,000 reduction in our revenues with this tier three reduction as a subsidy.
Well, I guess my answer would be that depends if Water 2025 goes forward or does not go forward. Right now, we have issued formal stop-work orders, so it's not moving. If there is a, a final decision that it will not move forward, we will terminate those contracts. Therefore, or we will move from a stop-work to a termination, there will be no project. Therefore, there is money in the capital project reserve that can continue to fund other critical requirements for some period of time. I can't put a, you know, I can't put a number on when that gets exhausted and when that money is down to the floor set by the financial policy that we follow. Obviously, that would have a bearing on the, the list of projects that we bring forward to you for the 23 budget and beyond. As I said, there are none posted in the current budget, and it's for that very reason.
And then in your, in the memo, we, it's mentioned that the water rates were priced and utilized as a quote-unquote "tool" to encourage water conservation. So what is the, I also had asked earlier for staff, and this is why they developed some maps that you'll hopefully be able to see on the website, I'm trying to understand what is the impact to our conservation efforts? And it's hard, I know it's hard to tell, but do you have any, I don't know, input on what your thoughts are regarding the impact to conservation that might occur over 2022 with this reduced water rate?
You're asking my personal opinion?
Or if somebody else has a less personal one? I don't know.
I guess that's your prerogative. My personal opinion is that it will impact our conservation overall as a city.
And I had asked if we had data on how many water customers were using over the tier three amount? And so, and I was trying to understand how that related to our water rates over the years before they start, that's what the maps were. So in 2018, before we had the water rate increase, what was, you know, what, you know, what the, I'm sorry, I'm tired, what the usage was during that timeframe and if people were hitting tier three, and if the rates increase had any impact to the amount of people hitting tier three after the water, after the water rate increase? Sorry, that was the most jumbled question ever.
Well, I, I think what we can say is that, and some of you have already said it, as it's in the memo, that about 7,500 customers, which is about 25% of the total residential customers, hit a tier three level greater than 20,000 gallons usage in a month at least one time during a year. Some hit it more than that. I think it's a little difficult to say exactly, you know, how to characterize the behavior of such a, a variety of people who maybe seldom hit it, and maybe they only seldom hit it because it was an exceptionally dry year versus customers who typically hit it most or all of the irrigation months. So it's, it's difficult to say that it did or did not. Again, it kind of comes down to personal habit on, you know, and whether what they, what an individual user chooses to do.
Okay. So in this, you know, as we move forward as a group, it would be helpful to understand the impact to our future infrastructure needs and our ability to meet them, as well as the impact to our conservation efforts overall. And that should be some of the measures that we use to evaluate future options. So those are my concerns, and again, that's why I'm asking all these questions. I don't quite have, you know, enough, you know, enough detailed answers to make to know what is the right solution for us. Thank you for letting me ask those.
Mayor Protem Demat?
I'm sorry, Mayor, may I, for that last comment or question from councillor Nummella, the analysis that staff is working on right now on the, on the, on the deeper dive into the different rate options, does include an analysis of the impact on the infrastructure program, so the capital funding, and also will include dynamic modeling as to when rate changes affect consumption. Now, that's modeling work, which is what's taking the time to do, but because it's not a static relationship between the rate and the consumption. So at certain, at certain points, rate changes do affect consumption, and that's, we're making our best efforts to bottle that and get that information back to you.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing it.
Mayor Protem?
I have a couple of quick questions. Max, sorry. On the point about replacement in the line, so I just want, so people understand, and some of this, I think I know the answer, but I think it's important for people to understand. So like when you're replacing a line, that's planned out, that's not something that we arbitrarily just decide to do, so that's something that we would do through the budget process.
Right.
You know, and so that would be something that would be in the long-term plan to say this line is X amount of years old, we should probably plan it, correct?
In, in about the 2014, 2015 timeframe, we did a pretty exhaustive master plan study through HDR, looking at all of the entirety of our network of water distribution mains and look, and then from, from that and from our own condition assessments, developed a, our best plan toward replacement of, of those that scored most critically, and one of those happened to be Sheridan Boulevard. And, and you see phase two of that plan in your packet tonight. Anybody who drives on Sheridan will certainly remember phase one, which was from about 80th Avenue up to about 88th Avenue, because it is very disruptive when you do that in an arterial like Sheridan. This phase two piece of that does from, does a replacement of that transmission main from 72nd up to 80th, 80th, in other words, that next southern piece, and there are continued sections of Sheridan that still need to be done north of 88. So yes, they are looked at very, in a, in a very systematic fashion, and we bring them to you according to most critical.
Great. And the last question I have along the same lines, we had a resident who spoke about what sounded like probably a water main break on her street, and I know that those, that's something else that we plan for, and obviously, we try to maintain so that we have less breaks, but they do happen because things, things break. So can you just kind of talk about how we budget for that year to year?
Sure. In fact, break history is only one of many factors that go into a decision to replace a water main. You would think it would be maybe the one and only, but it goes much deeper than just break history. If I could just comment on- If I could just comment on break history for a moment, the American Water Works Association Level of Service expectation is that their municipalities and service providers should, should shoot for no, no greater than 15 water main breaks per 100 miles per year. We, as a city, are doing better than that. We are usually in the range of six to eight water main breaks per 100 miles per year. So we are doing better, but they do in fact occur. And interestingly, they, they do occur in places that we either would expect them to occur based on age and condition, or have been forecasted in that master plan that we identified. So we, we have living information as we go forward that helps us validate that we are making best decisions and doing the most critical replacements before we have significant breakdowns in level of service.
Great. I think that's very helpful to kind of look at how we, we plan for that. So I appreciate those answers. Those are all my questions or comments.
Councilor Azadi.
Max, I need you back here. And this is a question, and probably for, I'm not sure if it's for you, Jody, City Manager, Andrews or Max. So I, so you heard me say we need immediate relief for all tiers immediately, not just tier three. My question is related to the, the information, right? So I've asked, I think it's been four weeks now, or what is the financial impact of X, you know, XYZ reduction for tier one and tier two? Can you explain what, why, if, you know, everyone tells me, well, we've had, you know, water sessions for years, we've done this for years, we've analyzed this for years, then we should have already had this information? Because I've been asking, well, what is the financial impact for tier one and tier two reductions? It's been four weeks since I've asked this. I haven't seen this. What is the complexity? Can you just educate me as to what's the complexity of getting tier one and tier two analysis that I assume would have been done already from all these years of analysis? What is taking so long? And I'm not trying to be rude, you know, I'm sure, I know the staff works hard. I'm just very confused as to why we don't have this information yet.
If you, if you tell me what the specific reduction is that you would like to see in any one of those, we can certainly evaluate and tell you exactly what that means in the budget. So City Manager has received a specific request put together by two of your colleagues. We are, we are providing the answer to that, as well as some alternative, as well as some alternatives to consider. But, so if, maybe I don't understand your question, but if, if, if you were to say to reduce tier one rate by 10 cents per 1,000 gallons, we can certainly tell you exactly what that would be, just like we were able to do here in saying, we believe that the net, the net difference in tier three is about $750,000.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's difficult to say without, without a specific proposal, what, what you would like to see. I can't say what the impact of it is unless I know exactly what we're evaluating.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sorry for sounding frustrated there. It's not at you, it's at the process, I think. Maybe as a new council, a new counselor, I'm trying to have some patience with information and the requests that we make and when we receive them. But this is so important, and we're voting on one option that, four weeks ago, you know, the question was asked in the water session, hey, how much would it be for tier three? And you had, you know, you see, you had a fixed, you know, fixed known quantity, 750K, I just don't understand, I guess, how the modeling works behind the scenes as to why this memo is taking so long for these other options. We've done this analysis theoretically for years. I'm new to this, right? But councils of past have asked questions, and I'm sure there's some kind of model that you have where you can easily iterate, right, back and forth as to what would happen if this, what would happen if that. It's frustrating to me because we are about to vote on something, on one option, without seeing the full slate. So that's why I asked, but it's not, so I'm not frustrated at you. Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
No.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Councilor Azadi.
No.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote.
That brings us to item C1, motion to adopt, or move to adopt Resolution Number 51. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 51, approving the intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Westminster and the State of Colorado Department of Higher Education by the State Board for the Community Colleges and Occupational Education for the use to benefit of Front Range Community College for renovation of heating, ventilation, air condition, and air conditioning system at the College Hill Library.
Councilor Smith.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 51. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the payment of $1,668,282 plus a 10% contingency of $166,828 for maximum expenditure not to exceed $1,835,110 to the Front Range Community College for renovation of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system at the College Hill Library.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the pay, authorize the payment for the Front Range Community College. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item, move to adopt Resolution 52. Councilor Smith.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 52, establishing the City of Westminster 2022 legislative policy statement.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, adopt Resolution Number 52. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
And Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Councilor Smith.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 53, establishing the City of Westminster 2022 lobbying protocols.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove, to move to adopt the Resolution 53. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
And Councilor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Item E is to move to authorize the mayor to sign an amended, amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Ravatta, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Golden, Westminster, and Edgewater to operate and administer the foothills animal shelter. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an amend, amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Ravatta, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, or Golden, Westminster, and Edgewater to operate and administer the foothill animal shelter.
Councilor Smith. Second. It's been moved and seconded for item E. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Baker.
Yes, I had asked for some information about this, and there wasn't enough time to develop it. So sometime in the future, I'd like to revisit elements of it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
And Councilor Baker.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
It'll add dog.
Item F, Councilor Seymour.
Thank you. I move, based on the recommendation of the City Manager, to determine that the public interest will be best served by utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials, electronic resources, and services for the Westminster Public Library for a grand total not to exceed $1,070,000 for 2022 from the following vendors. Baker &amp; Taylor, not to exceed $250,000. Midwest Tapes, not to exceed $175,000. OneDrive Inc., not to exceed $375,000. Curious Dynix, not to exceed $95,000. Tech Logic, not to exceed $75,000. And the Library Corporation, not to exceed $100,000.
Councilor Smith. Second. It's been moved and seconded to, to approve the recommendation by City Manager utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
And Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Councilor Smith.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 53, establishing the City of Westminster 2022 lobbying protocols.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to move to adopt the Resolution 53. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
And Councilor Smith.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Item E is to move to authorize the mayor to sign an amended, amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Ravatta, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Golden, Westminster, and Edgewater to operate and administer the foothill animal shelter. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an amend, amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the cities of Ravatta, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, or Golden, Westminster, and Edgewater to operate and administer the foothill animal shelter.
Councilor Smith. Second. It's been moved and seconded for item E. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Baker.
Yes, I had asked for some information about this, and there wasn't enough time to develop it. So sometime in the future, I'd like to revisit elements of it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
And Councilor Baker.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
It'll add dog.
Item F, Councilor Seymour.
Thank you. I move, based on the recommendation of the City Manager, to determine that the public interest will be best served by utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials, electronic resources, and services for the Westminster Public Library for a grand total not to exceed $1,070,000 for 2022 from the following vendors. Baker &amp; Taylor, not to exceed $250,000. Midwest Tapes, not to exceed $175,000. OneDrive Inc., not to exceed $375,000. Curious Dynix, not to exceed $95,000. Tech Logic, not to exceed $75,000. And the Library Corporation, not to exceed $100,000.
Councilor Smith. Second. It's been moved and seconded to, to approve the recommendation by City Manager utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
Councilor Smith.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Councilor Azadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Councilor Nermella.
Yes.
And Councilor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item G. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the City Manager, to determine that the public interest will be best served by authorizing a sole source contract with Resource Central in 2022, an amount not to exceed $350,000 for a comprehensive suite of water conservation and efficiency programs for the city's single-family utility customers, and authorize two additional one-year contracts in 2023 and 2024, not to exceed the amount of $350,000 per year, subject to annual appropriation.
Councilor Smith.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, based on the recommendation of the City Manager, authorizing a sole source contract with the Resource Central in 2022. Councilor Nermella.
Yes, I'm excited about these programs, and would love to see them expanded or at least utilized more. I'm trying to understand, do these only help single-family household, ownership households? Or are they, are we reaching any customers that are renting or in, you know? Yeah, what is the reach here?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. If Mr. Kirschbaum could join us again. Thank you.
Several of our programs have been both expanded in use and have been, programs added. One of those, I think, if I can find it exactly in the, in the, in the memo, is an expansion toward rental properties this year. So we, some of these programs are being moved forward to renters. We have not done that in the past, but as long as they can be done with the owner's consent, then they can, then they can be implemented. It's, the complexity is whether, whether the renter pays the, the utility bill, or whether, whether the owner pays the utility bill. In the cases where the renter pays the utility bill, they can qualify for some of these programs as long as the owner of the property concurs. And that's, that's a new facet of the program.
Now, yeah, I read that, and I'm excited to hear that. So is that just new this year?
I think this will be the first time we offer to renters.
It'd be great to track it and to see, and hopefully, this includes a lot of outreach that will hit the people that we, that probably need it the most. But do you have an outreach plan for this?
Yes, there's a significant, significant effort being put forward in outreach through multiple kinds of media to make sure that it's well-known. The best of those, I, I believe, is our website. Our website is very complete with conservation programs. What's available? Who do they apply to? Is there an income qualification or not? It's a, it's a very good first-stop source of information.
Great. And so we have single-family homeowners, and then we have renters that we're trying to get. I think another tier is going to be, for sure, our HOA properties. Is that something on the horizon that we're looking at?
Yes, we are working with HOAs as well, looking at common landscaped areas. And for, for that, as well as many of the programs that I'm referring to, I would, I think it's important that I recognize Drew Beckwith, who is our Senior Water Resources Analyst, who nearly, single-handedly is both expanding the number and the participation in programs. And that's one where there is direct reach out to HOAs.
Yes, I definitely understand the value of Drew. He taught the class I was in on land use and water. So thank you for that. I look forward to hearing about more progress on that front. That's all I have.
Mayor Protem.
We should just get you a seat up here next to City Manager.
Well, once again, we have a sole source contract. I see that as a definite red flag. And worse, this is on toilets and showerheads and light bulbs. This is not unique. This is not unique knowledge. There should be lots of competitors, probably several in our city itself. That would be love to do this. Because when I looked at the background data, even though I know it's been modified by another memo in the last few hours, the original background data said that we were with this $100,000 going to replace between 100 and 150 toilets. The way I count, that's $700 a toilet? I think there's lots of individuals in the city who would replace toilets and have showerheads and give tips for a whole lot less than $700 a toilet. I'll be voting no.
Counselor Nermella.
So I think to that point, that this includes the additional services and replacement of other fixtures and also the installment. Is that correct?
Well, as I read it, the only other items are like showerheads and light bulbs and things like that. It does include the installation, but I just replaced a toilet in my house. Cost me $120 for the toilet, low-flow, 1.28 gallons per flush. That's the only kind of toilet you can buy in Colorado, okay? And a new supply line, and a new wax ring for the thing. I did my labor myself, so that's worth what, $200?
Well, that's fantastic that you know how to do that. I am at the mercy of people who know how to install toilets. And as, you know, a lot of the folks that are on fixed incomes and low-income households, they, you know, I just think about my, my own mother, she would not be able to install a toilet. So I appreciate that this includes installation. The other thing that I am excited about with this contract is that MHYC is an AmeriCorps program. I'm just going to read from our staff memo, "An AmeriCorps program believes supporting the development of youth ages 17 to 24 has long-term impacts on individuals, communities, and the environment. And for 29 years, they have combined meaningful paid service opportunities and career pathways with education and personal exploration to help young adults discover their strengths and learn to lead." I think beyond just sole source, if we are also putting our money and dollars towards value, our values as a community, that this is well worth it.
Mayor Protem.
I'm just curious, moving forward, if that is something that we could put out to bid, because I think there's good points made all around. As far as this organization, I'm comfortable for all the reasons mentioned, but I do see the concerns that are raised. And I think that, you know, maybe through deeper information, it would be interesting to know exactly how they're accounting for if it's $700 per visit. The bottom line in the future, I would be interested in us going out to bid for this and seeing what other local companies may be able to benefit and perhaps extend the program with those dollars. But I will still be supporting, but I do think that that's something that I'd like to see us evaluate in coming years.
Counselor Smith.
I would be supportive of looking at other contracts and the services that they provide. I had, this was one of the items that I had the most questions about. And, and the item and the data that staff had provided led me to a broader perspective on this. So I'm just going to repeat the questions because I think it's helpful to understand the answers and the data of which derived my decision. And so with that, first question was, what has been the rate of return with this, excuse me, with this particular item? Staff wants to...
Thank you, Counselor.
Read what you had wrote to me. Yeah.
Mr. Kirschbaum, do you have the, do you have the answers to these questions? Are you able to provide what we provided to?
And if not, I have it up.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can do it either way. If you, if you have it, go right ahead.
Okay.
I'll be glad to sit down.
I'll spare you some, some time up here. So the rate of return on this was that single-family income-qualified fixture replacement program reduces a household monthly water usage by approximately 1,750 gallons per month. This saving will reduce the customer's water and sewer bill by $300, $325 per year, and the program costs the city about $800 per home if two toilets are replaced. This rolls up a cost of $12,500 per acre foot of water saved. Water rights on Clear Creek, the city's main source of supply, cost $30,000 plus per acre foot. My next question was that how many, this has been a continual program since 2017, so how many people have been served to date? And roughly speaking, it's been about, on average, 50 per year since 2017. 2020 was an anomaly with 20 people. We understand going into homes at that point was troublesome, but 2021 made up for it with serving 80 people. And then kind of going into Counselor Nermella's question about, it's not just a toilet. And so I wanted to make sure that I was understanding and reading the memo correctly, that it wasn't just a toilet that we were looking at with this program, that it is light fixtures, that it is light bulbs, faucets, and other measures that could reduce indoor water usage. And then the other one is, do we know how much water is saved? I didn't know if this was a subjective question, if we'd actually had measurable amounts to that. And staff did, which they estimate that we can save about 1,750 gallons of water per household. And then, let's see, is there, there was a concern with any liability for staff going in, not staff, excuse me, for this company going in, if we're contracting with them, if they're going in, if they have any kind of incidents with installation, would there be any liability on the city? And the answer was no. And then my final question was, if we add renters into this and allow that within the building maintenance, how does that work with, with not having an owner occupied? And the answer was that renters can participate with written permission from the homeowner, and the Mile High Youth Corps will facilitate this ownership permission process. So with all of this information, further information from staff, I was on the lines of maybe not recommending and not approving this, but with the information, the questions that I've asked and the information provided, I feel comfortable moving forward with this tonight.
Mayor Protem.
So I kind of have the same kind of question on this as far as potentially looking at expanding this to people who own rental property. That may be difficult because it's income-qualified. But if, if you're allowing the renter to do it, and say you're in a situation where the, the property owner could increase these things, that does have an effect to the public good as far as water use and all the things that Counselor Smith just kind of alluded to, it might be worth us looking at how we might be able to expand that to certain rental properties so that they were being proactive.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be voting against this tonight, and I want to be specific why, in that I believe our cost per item is too high, that we need to rebid this, and maybe, I'm not sure if this would qualify under one of our CD BG programs that fund this. And so I know that that program has a great deal of strings attached to it. Don't want an answer for that tonight, but it's something maybe in the future that we use that to be able to keep people in their homes, and it is income-qualified also. So it may be just a shifting of dollars that we get from another source.
Anyone? Oh, Mayor Protem.
I'm just curious along that, that lines, like what it takes to go out to bid for this. Because, you know, this is the end of the year, so this is for next year. So if we said tabled this, how, would that impact next year? I mean, that's my concern, because I don't disagree that I would like to see both of these items, this and the last one, go out to bid, but I don't want to see it impact this next year, and we're in a short timeline. So to table it, I feel like it might impact next year, and I'm just trying to understand what that process might look like if we went out to bid.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Kirschbaum, would you offer your thoughts on this?
We could give him a wireless mic instead.
It certainly, yeah, it certainly would impact Mayor Protem, because we would have to pause, prepare, and issue a call for bids, and then evaluate those and award those. So it would, it would, it would not be implemented in the, in the new year as this one would. I'm probably estimating the end of the first quarter would be the earliest that we would get something rolling.
I would say it's probably 90 to 120 days to go through a procurement process, to do the best value selection, and then get it onto an agenda and get it back to you, which is, if you add all of that up, I would say it's going to be 120 days.
Great, I appreciate that. With that said, I'm going to remain in support of this, but what I would ask is that we look this next year with plenty of time to be able to see what that looks like, because I do think that there's a, an undertone that it's not that we don't support these initiatives, it's that there's a concern that this money's being best spent and spread across as many residents as possible. So if we could look at that sometime even mid-year, I think would be, would be great.
I agree. I, I will vote for this tonight, but that's a high price. I have no idea if it's a low price, if you RFP it, but we don't know if we don't RFP it. But that gives them this year to think about it and see who else they can RFP. Anything else? Oh, sorry, there, Nermella, I'm in counselor. Whoever you are.
No, you there. What was I going to say? No, I, I do, I do think it's helpful to understand, you know, to go out, I'm sorry, to go out to bid and understand, you know, just what the, what is the price for all of this. I, I would encourage us to, to place some value on not just the best value of the contract, but on mutual opportunity to impact our community on both sides. So, and that's why, and also Counselors Smith's questions were really helpful earlier. So that, in addition to just the, the value-driven organization, but that would be helpful to just kind of have that be part of our analysis or our decision-making.
See no one else. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
No.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-two vote.
That brings us to item I, move to authorize construction contract with T. Lowell Construction. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize a construction contract with T. Lowell Construction Inc. for Sheridan Boulevard Waterline Rehabilitation and Replacement Project Phase Two in the amount of $4,838,500, plus a contingency of $967,000, $700, for the total amount not to exceed $5,806,200.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize a contract with T. Lowell Construction. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to item J.
Counselor Smith. I move based on the recommendation of the interim city manager to determine that the public interest would best be served by authorizing a negotiated purchase agreement from the sole source provider Motorola Solutions Incorporated to provide 230 new APX 6000 P25 AES encrypted Phase II portable radios to the Westminster Police Department in 2022 in an amount not to exceed $827,100.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
Mayor Protem, did you have a question?
No, I have a comment, because I've heard this brought up before in just my take on encrypted radios, because I've heard members of the public be concerned about that, and why police departments encrypt their radios. It's about safety of the public and the officers, because when you're in a situation, you don't want potentially bad actors to be able to listen to radio communication. So I just think it's an opportunity for education for the public to understand why that's such a vital tool for our officers, for the public's sake.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah, this was just an information question. So these encrypted radios are about $4,300 apiece? And they're good for what, five years? Thank you.
And for the record, they said yes, if you couldn't hear them. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat. Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That concludes item's business before the council, and it's 9:22, and we will move to presentations. But do you need a break first? We need a break, 10 minutes. Okay, we pass time. Okay, we're going to change the order. We're going to do city manager recruitment first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and Council members, good evening. I'm Larry Dorr from the City Manager's Office and I'm joined on this item by Dean Martin and Marty Erickson from our Human Resources Department. Forgive me, I'm used to hitting the button on the screen throughout the course of this day. Regarding item number two, on November 15th, Council had its roundtable session and outlined its short-term priorities. And one of those items was the recruitment of the next city manager. And our staff was listening to that and is here before you tonight to outline a couple of decision points related to the matter that we seek your direction so that we can be of service to the Council in the selection of Westminster's next city manager. In the packet, we provided a number of firms, those that are known in the market and those that were provided by Mayor McNally, thank you, Mayor, that are listed. So there are 12 potential firms. But of course, I don't want to assume that it is the choice of the majority of Council to proceed with an executive recruiter. It's, that's the recommendation of Council and that's what's most commonly done here at Westminster in selecting city managers over the years and at other large communities along the front range. That's a very common practice. So we are prepared to take your direction on the five decision points that we've listed in the Council's memo, prepared to answer any questions and undertake any next steps that you would like to have us do in service to the Council for the recruitment and selection of the next city manager. So the first item that I have here, Mayor, is related to the choice to proceed with the selection of a professional recruitment firm and either an interview of the five firms listed in your message, the seven that Council, excuse me, that staff have provided in addition, and the prospect of proceeding with a request for proposals process. So, Mayor, to you, we're happy to serve and provide any information going forward.
I have started calling people. I got that permission from Council. And so with the list I had, I'm having good conversations and we'll have some RFPs by the first or second week in January.
Okay, thank you. And I think you'll have some proposals, a request for proposal processes. We won't solicit requests from the broader market or outstanding firms, or rather, this list will provide proposals to you. And, and then would, would it be the pleasure of Council for our staff to provide any preliminary scoring, any consolidating distribution of copies of those proposals and any scheduling going forward? Please let us know your desire in terms of scheduling and distributing those proposals as they come into you.
And as that happens, we'll make those decisions. But just need to finish up with one more tomorrow and then we'll know, I'll know who's interested. They have been very positive so far. They look us up while I'm talking to them. I've been very honest with where we're at, where we've been the last eight years. And they can read any of that in the newspaper, so might as well tell them upfront. And I've told them all, we have a great working council that's able to have discussion and not agree on a topic, but move on to the next topic. And they've asked me some questions. And so as soon as I had all of those taken care of, I was going to report back to Council.
Thank you. We understand your direction. That's terrific. And anytime in the future, if there's scheduling, we will work with City Manager Andrews and your city attorney for arranging any agreements that you may have with any proposing firms and facilitate any Council resolutions or actions that you'd like to undertake in the selection of the manager or the proposing firm. So we will just stand by to receive your direction on next steps. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor Protam, if I could just clarify, I'm going to remain at arm's length during this process in the event that I'm participating in, in the recruitment. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
And that's why I told them I was calling them and that I had the permission from Council.
Thank you. And Mayor, if you have, if there's any way that I can be of service to you or our HR department, please call and we'll do, undertake any arrangements, scheduling, distribution of proposals, whatever is necessary to assist you. So feel free to reach out to us. Thank you. On the second matter, Mayor, if I may proceed, if we're, if that concludes this matter of the recruitment? Very well. Thank you. I just want to provide a little historical context and, and thank you, Counselor Smith, for raising this in a separate message. And I've attached this for tonight as a companion item for a direction to staff from Mayor Protam and Council. At the conclusion of 2020 and the performance evaluation process of the city manager, the city attorney and the presiding municipal judge, Council gave direction to staff to begin a process to transition from a human resources department-led performance appraisal process to an outsourced independent third-party company. We received that direction and in the first quarter of 2021 undertook a request for proposals process and provided those proposals to City Council. City Council performed a screening and recommendation and City Council entered into an agreement with CPS HR Consulting to provide those services, again, directly to City Council without the involvement of our Human Resources Department at Westminster. Since that time, obviously, we've had some changes. And so wanted to introduce that subject and of course invite Mayor Protam Demont, Counselor Smith or Counselor Seymour to describe that process and describe your experience in that process. And then again, there are three direction points or decision points that staff is seeking so that we can proceed to assist you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council members in the performance evaluation process of those three Council appointees. So with that, if I may, Mayor, invite any comments from those three individuals. Thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dorr. I've been kind of close to this for a while. I was actually part of the group or the screening group former Mayor Seitz and I set with staff and evaluated a number of groups. And it came out of, is from my perspective, the desire to have, A, a better laid-out plan, some KPIs and objectives for our three employees, but also to take it away from the city so there was a non-bias process specifically around the city manager. Since I think there was a feeling that it, it just felt off for us to have to go through HR. Not that their services aren't great and we have great people, but when they report to the city manager, it just didn't felt as constructive as it could be. And so that's kind of what launched us down that path. I will say from my end, and I don't know where this leaves us for this year because I think that we need to go back out. I still believe that it's the right thing to do for our, our three contract employees to have kind of a system in place and make sure that we're evaluating that. And the other part that from my end that I would share is to be able to have that HR resource. As somebody who has employees at my day job, I know that whenever you go through employee evaluations, hires, terminations, that those folks are somebody that makes sure that things are done in a best practice to both protect the employee as well as the employer. So I think that that's very valuable for us to have expert who are dealing with our contract employees. Some of the things that, as far as the process with this, this group, I think it was, it just seemed very disconjoined to me. We weren't getting things on a timeframe that I, I know I wasn't comfortable with and the process just didn't go well. The other thing that I would mention as we go forward, I, I would certainly be more comfortable and recommend that whatever firm we choose, that this is the only thing that they're doing for the city. It came out through some of our reviews last year that this particular group was doing other work for the city. And that, that raised some flags for me as far as that being able to be as productive as it could be if the only thing they were doing was helping us with our three contract employees.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I couldn't capture it any better than what Mayor Protam has described. For me, I think it's important for us, I mean, that was kind of the background of why we had went to an outside firm. But I think obviously I'm open to a discussion because I believe it's been done in the past where it's been held internally, where it was the mayor and the council holding those evaluations. But I think there is value having a unbiased outside of the city look into our three employees and how the council relates to the employees. So I do feel like there's some value and benefit in, in keeping it separated. That said, with this particular contract, I was not impressed at all. And I feel like there was lots of missteps, lots of miscommunication, and the process just wasn't conducive to productive, productive and cohesive meeting. And so I think it's important for me, in particular, And so I think it's important for me particularly as a, for lack of a better word, boss, to our employees, I think that it's important to have us be accountable just as much as you're accountable to us. And so I think with this in particular, with this contract, I want to go back out. I want to make sure that we are bidding it. Obviously, it wouldn't be a sole source because it would be back with us. But I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are setting the right expectations, not only for who we choose to hire, but also the right expectations for our employees.
Counselor Seymour?
I have to concur with my colleagues, having gone through that whole process. I believe the premise of what we started on was correct so that we can isolate this and not have any conflict, conflicts, or put any undue burden on our HR department for this. But I do believe, since this is very much a process-driven process, is that that part of the performance lacked. And so I was underwhelmed by that part of it, and that's really what we need the help with. We need deadlines met, we need the right forms, we need the follow-up. That's critical, critical for me. So I would also like to capture the points. I believe we should rebid this. I believe we should limit the scope of work as far as deal, other dealings with the city. And now that we've been through the process too, at least three of us have a little bit of better light on what the end results are, and I think that will help too with the contractor. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. I think we have some clear direction. If I may summarize, Mayor, I think that, I don't want to assume, but I think we have direction to proceed with a renewed, a new request for proposals bid process, and there is a general consensus to continue on with the third-party input on the review of the three appointees. We will proceed in a diagram out, next steps in a request for proposals process and bring responses to you for consideration and evaluation. And let me just check with the city attorney if there may be some other steps involved.
No, I agree with the proposals. I have a question maybe for the Mayor Protem, who had an opportunity to interview other providers last year. Are there firms that were identified through last year's process that you would ask staff to reach out to and see if they're still available for this task?
We did have another firm that did really well. I do not remember their name. Maybe the, you know, we're great at record-keeping as a government, so I'm sure that if we looked back at who scored the next highest, I do recall that there was actually kind of a good rub between the top two performers as far as that process. So I think it would be worth at least talking to that group again. The other thing, though, that maybe I could recommend, and I know that this is more time-consuming, and I would hope the whole council is open to it, I feel like it might have been a miss to only have two council members interview the groups, even if we want to narrow it down and then have finalists interviewed by the whole council. Because at the end of the day, each of us are going to have to work with them. We each approach things with a different lens, and so we might have different questions that are going to lend to a better selection process. And quite frankly, I don't want it to be on me again if we picked the wrong one, so.
It was your fault. If I could comment on that too, and I appreciate the work that Mayor Seitz and Mayor Protem did on that. And I, it was down, the whole council was available to that. It was scheduling and expediency, so, you know, that was what was happening. There was no exclusions on that. But yeah, we could work forward and see how that worked out this time.
Have you guys ever used Mountain States? I've used them in some other groups.
I've certainly used them in other professional day jobs, reputable.
Thank you. Okay, yes, absolutely. We did retain our files from the last process. We'll make sure to talk to those finalist firms at any submitters, frankly, and of course, make sure that this gets to Mountain States. I think we have an understanding, City Attorney, in terms of next steps, unless you had any other comments, then we will just proceed. Thank you.
That it?
Thank you.
Okay. Overview of portions of water law application applicable to current water court matters.
Mayor, thank you. If I could introduce Sarah Borgers of our Public Works and Utilities Department. Sarah is the city's Water Resources and Quality Manager. She'll be leading the presentation this evening. And I just want to advise council and apologize. It appears that the presentation was not attached to your packet for tonight's packet, and I do apologize for that, Mayor, particularly. We have strived to do that since the, since you came into office, and we apologize for that on this one. But Sarah will walk us through each slide in this case and make sure that we have all the information captured. And this is a preparatory public session in advance of the executive session, which the city attorney will introduce after this presentation.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council, thank you so much for sticking it out with us. I know it's been a long few days, and so we're just appreciative that you're still listening. So we're just going to do a really brief overview of some water court general information before we go into an executive session to talk about an ongoing water court case matter. If you hear me blurt out numbers and letters, 18CW 3090, that's just a court case name, so you can call me up and say, stop using the numbers. So just really quickly, we're going to do a very quick overview of some key parts of our water system, a really high-level overview of some water rights, just good-to-know information, and then briefly define what a change case is, because that's what our 18CW 3090 case is. Can see there, I just did it. All right. So Westminster's water supply, as you probably already know, is centered around Stanley Lake. We share Stanley Lake with three other entities, the cities of Northland, the city of Thornton, and an entity called Freco, the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company.
Your presentation isn't coming up on our, it's on our back screen. I would love to help.
We do have, we do have audiovisual support going into the, there we go.
It's now online.
Oh, there it is. Okay, we're up. Okay, you're good. So everyone should be seeing a picture aerial of Stanley Lake, yes?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. I'm actually, so there's another gentleman on the other side of the wall over here that's going to push play so that this, what I'm about to show syncs up with what folks are saying, seeing on YouTube. So I'm going to say I am, I'm hitting play on the video now. All right. So a primary source of water to fill the lake is Clear Creek. Of course, it's not going to work. Oh, is it? Okay, I'll just talk fast then. So our primary water source is the Clear Creek watershed. You should see a polygon on your screen, a kind of a light-colored polygon. That's our watershed that we keep a really close eye on. You'll often hear us talking about snowpack. One of the primary measures we use to check and see how the watershed's doing is the snowtell sites at Loveland and Bertha. Those are right on top of both of those passes. Oh, there we go. And we, you'll also see some little green tags. So that whole drainage area drains into Clear Creek, which is a little blue line that you see down through the middle. And those little green tags are actually water quality monitoring stations. We know water quality, we're monitoring water quality 24/7, except for when the lake, when it's frozen up there. So we're moving water off of Clear Creek through three primary ditch systems. Hopefully, what you're seeing right now is one of those diversion structures where we move water off of Clear Creek. This particular one is the Crook Canal. It's part of our water court case. But there are two others that are big diversion structures that we use to move water into Stanley Lake. As you zoom out, you'll see those three ditches from left to right. There's the church ditch, then the Farmers Highline ditch, and then the Crook Canal. And those all carry water from Clear Creek into Stanley Lake. As you know, Stanley Lake is our sole drinking water supply. This is where all of our water is that we can then pump from that lake and pump to either or both of Semper Water Treatment Plant or Northwest Water Treatment Plant. We do have other reservoirs, but we don't drink the water in them. They're lower quality and they're primarily used to keep high-quality water in Stanley, and we use those lower reservoirs to do other things that were legally required to do. All right. So away from the video into the more boring PowerPoint bullets. So you saw that there were three primary ditches that the city uses to deliver water into Stanley Lake, the church, the Farmers Highline, and the Crook. And generally speaking, these ditches are owned and operated by ditch companies, and the city owns shares within those companies. That share ownership grants the city access to a proportionate amount of water that's available to the ditch company. So as an example, if the city owns a third of the shares in the ditch company, we get a third of the water that's available to the ditch company. So as an ownership of a share of any of these companies, oh, the ownership of any of these shares doesn't give us or guarantee us a certain amount of water. It's really just a pro rata of what's available at any time. So if there's a drought, we get less water off of those shares. If there's plenty of water, we get more water. And an important other note related to this case in particular is that we also get storage rights associated with those. So we get the right to use diverted water, and then we also get the actual bucket to put it in. All right. So a little bit of history. Back when these ditches were developed, they were primarily used for agricultural purposes. Farmers would come together, they would build, form these companies, and then they would go out and construct these ditches. And after they, in process, building those ditches, they would then go to water court and obtain a decree. Those decrees are very valuable because they have a high priority. They get first right to those water because they were constructed very early on in the state's history. But they are decreed specifically for agricultural uses only. And so when we bring them into our system, when we purchase the share from a farmer, we cannot automatically start using that water that we purchased. All right. So in order to use these shares, the city has to take shares to water court to obtain a new decree. We retain that high priority so that we're able to move water perhaps when others are not. But what gets added is the ability for us to use it, treat it, and send it to our customers for municipal purposes. It's a little more complicated than it sounds. There's a lot of engineering work that goes into it, and there's a lot of legal work that goes into it. So we have our, we actually have our water attorneys here tonight who are going to be talking with you in executive session along with Mr. Frankel. So they'll be able to walk you through some of those details. All right. We are almost done. So just background on what that water court process is. The city will file an application in this case, for this case, we filed the application in 2018. So we've been working on this for a few years now, and we are set to go to trial soon. So we, what we did in 2018 is we filed an application. Once that application is filed with the court, the court will then take that application and put it in what's called the water resume. The water resume is published and is openly available to the public, and other water providers and water users are able to look at the water resume, make sure that there are no cases that may or may not, that may impact their own water rights. So if, as an opposer, they see that, yes, you're a change case, or whichever case you're wanting to do, you'll then have the opportunity to enter that case as an opposer in that case. So the city will then work with the opposers that get into our case that have concerns about their own water rights and begin to work out details of making sure that both the city and the opposer are whole at the end of the process. So if the city and opposer can come to a resolution, the both parties will enter into something called a stipulation. And that stipulation is just a formal way of acknowledging that issues have been resolved and potentially even have some details about how those issues were resolved. If all of the opposers stipulate, then the water court will take all the stipulations and all the little pieces and parts and form a decree that everyone's in agreement with, and they will issue that decree. If, however, you can't come to an agreement, if you come to an impasse, then we would go to water court. The trial would be heard by a water judge in water court, and the judge would issue the decree based on his understanding or her understanding. All right. So then a water court decree, it talks about how much water the city is allowed to use from those shares, when the water can be diverted, how much, and when water must be delivered back to the river to ensure that downstream users are not injured. And this is all based on historical use analysis completed by water engineers and our water attorneys. With that, I'm happy to answer general questions. If you have specific questions, those will probably be better handled in the attorney, with the attorney in executive session.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, it is my understanding that we take the majority of our water out of Clear Creek in the winter, like December 1st through March 30th.
So we have, of the three ditches, we have ditches that operate in the summertime, and we have ditches that operate in the wintertime. The Crook Canal operates in the winter, the church and the Farmers Highline operate in the summer. What you might be thinking about is spring runoff. And those, at high points of spring runoff, oftentimes, we will be running multiple ditches through that time, and that's when we do get a lot of water.
Okay. And does, like the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company, is that just a storage bucket, or does that have Clear Creek rights too?
The Freco shares that we're changing have both. We can divert water through the Crook Canal, and we can store water in Stanley Lake.
Okay, so like all the Freco water comes through the Crook Canal.
What, can you say that one more time?
So all the Freco water comes through the Crook Canal?
Generally, yes, sir.
Okay. And is the Farmers Highline, the Farmers Highline HR Brown?
We do have some shares that are HR Brown, but that is not all of our shares.
So it's a different Farmers Highline? Because there are probably 100 Farmers Highlines in Colorado, right?
They're the same Farmers Highline, but I think they were a different purchase. There's, there was a different agreement, as I understand, with those shares.
Okay. And do you know about the date of our shares, are they 1905?
Um.
Roughly?
They're early 1900s.
Got you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going, going, gone.
Thank you very much.
We have requests for executive session, an executive session for consultation with the city attorney and special water counsel regarding pending litigation in water court case 18CW 3090, and for the purpose of receiving legal advice thereon pursuant to WMC 1-11-3, C3, and CRS 24-6-4024B and E. Is that an L or an I?
E Roman 1.
Oh, okay.
So that, you're correct, Mayor, that is the title. So if council would be, if you're willing to poll your colleagues to see if they are interested in going into the executive session, then we can adjourn into an executive session.
I will poll to see if you're willing to go into executive session. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Demella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. We are going. Merry Christmas, everybody, and see you next year.